...to order, let the minute taker please call the roll.
Alderman Rory Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here. Next, approval of the meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes from July 13, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Questions? Changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stayed.
That passes.
I wasn't here.
Next is a report and recommendation, approval of variance to allow redevelopment of 1235 North Middle Boulevard. Ms. Chrissy, are you gonna?
Thank you, good evening. I'm just gonna give a brief overview, and then I know the petitioner is here. So, the request tonight is to approve building height, a building height driveway width and driveway offset variations for, in order to allow the redevelopment of 1235 North Middle. The property is at the southeast corner of Mark and Middle. It currently is improved with an approximately square, forty-one thousand square foot office, surface parking, and then curb cuts, excuse me, on Mark and Middle. The proposed improvements would be to build an approximately eighty-two thousand square foot warehouse and distribution facility that could be divisible into two tenant spaces, which would actually fill a gap that we have in our building stock of forty thousand square foot tenant spaces. The original request was actually to vary the, a bill-to-line requirement, but since then, the council has approved an amendment to eliminate the bill-to-line requirement for type 14 buildings, so that request has been withdrawn. The, the other improvements are to modify the existing curb cut on Mark Street to relocate the curb cut on Middle, and I should note that the curb cut on Mark Street is a full access, and then the curb cut on Middle would be a right-in, right-out. There's surface parking on three sides of the building, and then, excuse me, the truck docks are on the south side of the property. The building design, conceptual design, is shown on the screen here, and one of the variation requests is to grant a height variation of up to forty-five feet, where thirty feet is currently allowed. Staff is actually working on a text amendment right now, which will go to CDC in just a couple of weeks to increase that height, so we no longer have these height variation requests for the type 14 building. This view is actually from Middle Boulevard, so you can see some of the aesthetic improvements and architectural details that are being proposed. This view is from Mark Street, and again, just a consistent building design. As we look at the curb cut for the variations, this is Mark Street, and just kind of as a crude depiction, instead of all the lines that are shown there, this is really kind of the path that a truck would take exiting the site, heading left, or turning left onto Mark, and then turning right. The requested curb cut variation for this curb cut is sixty-eight point one-six feet at the property line, where thirty-four feet is currently allowed by code, and then a hundred and sixteen point one-five feet at the property, excuse me, at the street, where forty-four feet is allowed. This is the curb cut on Middle. As you can see here, we've got a hatch median, so this curb cut is going to be a right-in, right-out only. There is a striped pork chop, but it is not raised median. So, again, to sort of demonstrate the movement of the tractor trailers as they pull into the site, that's really kind of a crude drawing, but in regards to the request, they're requesting an eighty-seven point eleven foot width at the property line, and a hundred and eight point oh-five feet at the street, again, where thirty-four and forty-four feet are allowed respectively. The other request, requested variation is a driveway offset variation on Collector Roadways, which Middle is a Collector Street. We do require that there is a hundred and fifty-foot distance from one driveway to the offset driveway. They're requesting a variation of a hundred and twenty-one feet. However, the request is intended to avoid having conflicts, but with the median on Middle, that conflict is eliminated anyhow. The CDC did recommend approval. They found that the requests are consistent with the UDO, the comprehensive plan, and meets the standards for granting variations. I'm happy to answer, any questions?
Alderman Messina.
How large is the lot size?
It is five point two-four acres.
What does that translate to in feet?
Two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand three-hundred-and-ninety-four square feet.
You have a follow?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Just 'cause I know this has come up a few times with residents, to be clear, these, these folks pay property taxes, correct? And I just did, I did some research, and I know, this is the Hamilton Partners prop, project. I look at similar buildings that came up, and the property taxes being paid by comparable square foot size is double what the current size, site is, this site. So, is this site undeveloped currently, and what you showed us is a vision? 'Cause I see it marketed already on their website.
Would it be possible for me to answer that?
Sure, if you, if you want to step up to the podium, give your name.
Tom Aher, and I'm with Hamilton Partners.
Yep.
The primary reason you see a diminution of value on the real estate taxes is because the building's a hundred percent vacant. Over the last twenty-two years, we received a building as an exchange for value when our founding partners left the Trammell Crow Company. And so, we'll work with a real estate attorney, and then we're able to get a reduction, which typically kicks in at about a fifty percent vacancy rate. So, so on this particular property, as far as the benefit to the city, over the last twenty-two years, you have the property vacant forty-five percent of the time, which would have meant, as you would have seen, that you would have seen a depressed bill, versus in the, the literature that I put together, I shouldn't call it literature, but in the responses to Middle, we've got a series of buildings, we have four along Wooddale Road, and then we have one on Thorndale. The total, just under six-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet. On a comparable basis, those have been occupied almost ninety-four percent of the time. And so, that would be, you know, if you were to look at some of our buildings, and we actually have an eighty thousand square foot building at eleven-twenty-one, eleven-fifty-one North Wooddale Road, that'd probably be a pretty good comparison to what you might expect here, although I would think our taxes would be a little bit higher, because that I'd consider a Class B building. It's twenty-four foot clear, and this would be thirty-two foot, definitely a Class A building. So, I actually, when I looked at the tax bill, I thought it about, and this is just off the top of my head, I thought it'd be double what it is now, because I thought it looked like it was pretty low, too.
Sure.
Yeah, no, just for those watching at home, you know, I know we've had these questions before, just consistency, so I appreciate you giving that explanation, 'cause this is an opportunity for those watching at home, for the city to also get a bigger share of the property taxes, ultimately.
Yeah, absolutely, when you look at schools, and parks, and libraries, and police fire, all of that, you know, it's really important, and, and actually, as, we started those buildings shortly after we left the Trammell Crow Company, and maybe I should cut myself out here, I could, I could kind of roll, so I'll sit back down.
Thank you, answered my question, thank you.
Alderman Jacob.
Just two questions for Mrs. Chrissy. Number one, the, this building's coming down, and all the concrete's being torn up, and this will be a brand-new development.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that, thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
This building's in a Tiff area, correct?
Ms. Chrissy?
That is not correct. This is outside of the Tiff district.
Okay, well, one more question.
Go ahead.
Traffic study?
Ms. Chrissy?
The petitioner was not required by code to provide a traffic study. However, they did do a voluntary traffic evaluation, which found that the number of daily trips was decreasing significantly from what would be used, if this were used as an office.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Is this a spec building? Do you have a tenant?
Yes, sir, it is a spec building. We, we have had some conversations, but we don't have any portion of it leased at this point in time. And as Kelly mentioned, you know, we'd either look at a full building user, or we've, we've got it set up, or we could break it into about a high forty thousand square foot, and maybe a, a low thirty thousand square foot use.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Could you go back to the pork chop? So, that is not a, a step, pork chop?
Ms. Chrissy?
It, it's a painted pork chop, and the reason for that is, in terms of the maintenance of a raised curb pork chop, with the semis having to, if you look at the, the lines, that actually goes over the top of that, and because of the fact that there is a median anyhow, they indicated that to try and, you know, ensure that people exiting the site knew that they could only make a right turn. There will also be signage to show, right turn only. But due to the long-term maintenance, and, and just the aesthetics of, you know, as the trucks rolling over it, it deteriorating and crumbling, that they're proposing a striped.
Go ahead, follow.
You said you're gonna put a sign up there, is it going in that pork chop, or is it gonna be on the side?
It's on the side, it's actually noted right here.
May I just add a further comment, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I have to tell you, I don't do this a lot, so if I'm out of line, just, you know, stop me, so. The, what Kelly's talking about, we actually had a beautiful day when we came to meet her, and I was with our civil engineers, and we sat out at the picnic table. And one of the things that, if you were to go past the site over on Mark Street, where we've got, it's actually an easement, and a drive along the east side of the building, that does have a raised curb. But if you take a look at that, it's, it's an ISO, it's beat up so bad from, you know, trucks, plows, everything else hitting it, so it's, you know, we kind of get the idea of what it's meant to be, but over time, it's, it's just not really a tenable improvement to, let's say, construct, to, to manage it.
Thank you. Alderman Catalano.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other? Alderman Mike Sizmarsky.
Kelly, couldn't that sign go on the median also, facing, no, no left turn, facing that driveway? Huh? Well, he said that we're gonna put it on the grass, why can't they put it right in the middle of the median? The trucks come into it, some people don't loop right, left.
Well, you know, I can just point out again, as Kelly did, if you look at the path of, you know, if somebody really swung it wide, they're gonna run it over. Oh, you mean the median out front, yeah, we can do that for sure.
'Cause that's where, that's where drivers look at first, 'cause that's where.
If the city do it, we'll pay for it. I, I apologize, I misunderstood your question, or your.
Okay.
So, we've gone median, I'm wishing it, if you agree to that, into, I just want to.
I think you can do that.
Yeah, I'd be very hap, we'd be very happy to, what, you know, whoever's gonna help with safety out there are in favor of.
So, we're just gonna add, moving the sign, right?
I have a.
Or adding a sign.
So, I have a question.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Kelly, how many more spec buildings do we have in the future going on here? Because it seems like spec, spec, spec. Do we have any tenants?
So, the property at fifteen fifty-five North Middle, it's my understanding that they signed a contract with a tenant, although I have yet to confirm that, but they were in discussions when they came to city council. So, I believe that the, the contract was signed, but until I confirm it, I don't want to release that information. And so, that building is already, as far as I know, leased up. As far as the other buildings, you know, really, the, our code does not restrict spec buildings, and I understand your concern, and we work with the brokers for the individual business, or the individual properties, so that we can help them identify maybe existing businesses, or new businesses moving in, that can then utilize that space. And so, we've been in contact with a number of existing businesses in the city to see if, as they look to expand, they may be able to expand in these buil, businesses.
I want to put up my concerns about sitting here and saying about spec buildings. You put up a spec building, then you go for your taxes and stuff like that, since it's not in the Tiff area, then you go there and fight your taxes. So, now the property value is cut.
The one thing.
No, you, you don't need to, you don't need to respond to that. I don't, I don't think a builder's gonna come in, buy a million-dollar building, tear it down, build a ten-million-dollar building to not rent it, okay? That's ludicrous on its basis, so.
I understand that, but that, if they can't rent it, they're gonna get the taxes.
And if the market fell apart, then it fell apart. That would be the same for anybody and everybody.
Sure.
All right, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Alderman Rory Wesley.
No.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes. That passes. What do we have? Next items to be considered at future meetings, UDO text amendments, parking, non-conformities overlay in September, and Thorndale Corridor rezoning winter of 2018. Is there anything else anybody'd like to add? No? I make a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary Committee, call to order. Roll call stands as previously shown with the planning, zoning, and building committee. I need a motion for an approvals minutes for the regular meeting held July 13.
So moved.
I'll make the motion.
Any questions?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And those are fine. All right, we're gonna call on Chief Vesta, so that we could talk about car 401, where are you? Used to be fifty-four, for the older people.
I've seen that.
Was that Gunther Tootie? Gunther Tootie?
Tootie, I'm all doing.
You're good.
I read it in the book somewhere. Yeah, history, what in them history books?
I think I read about mine.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. We're looking to get approval to replace the current watch commander vehicle, which is Squad 401. It's currently a 2013 Chevy Tahoe. We went to the Chevy Tahoe for the watch commander car four years ago. We really like it, it's built more heavy-duty for that vehicle, and that vehicle's also used, you know, as a scene, there's another radio in the back to manage an active incident. This was originally scheduled to be replaced last year with the newer vehicles, the, the new Fords that we've been buying, and with this vehicle, we've found that we've been able to extend the vehicles a little bit longer than we were in the past. So, we did hold off purchasing last year and put it in the budget again for this year. But, you know, we feel at this point that now it's time to replace this vehicle. So, we're looking for a total of, not to exceed thirty-six thousand six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents through Curry Motors, and this is a competitive bid through the Northwest Municipal Conference.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Jacob.
Just one, you had said it's gonna be another Chevy Tahoe?
Correct.
And I guess a second question would be, did we, I'm not sure what the other car would be, and a Ford, but since we have all Ford, other vehicles, is there a version of the Chevy Tahoe in the Ford? Not really that familiar with the Ford trucks.
Well, the, the Ford utility interceptors that we purchased for the rest of our squads, but they are a little bit smaller than this one. We already have a custom-fit rack in the back that we can hold maps, and extra things that we wouldn't put in the regular patrol car. So, the nice thing about this is our current stuff will transfer over to the current Chevy Tahoe. And, you know, because we're running an extra radio out of there, too, it also has dual batteries and is set up for a police package.
Go ahead, thank you.
Now, we got a motion and a second on the floor, or is that Alderman Eugene Wesley? Question?
Is that the price, is that coming and selling the all equipment and everything? Or is there a?
No, that'll be done through Public Safety Direct, an additional cost to do that, and we budget for that under the vehicle maintenance accounts.
Any more questions? Alderman Messina?
You can stop me if it's, if it's for future items, but with all the.
Stop.
With the carbon monoxide, recent issues with the police interceptors, is there an inspection program that's gonna happen?
Sure, two parts to that. One, the garage does regularly inspect the vehicles and check for those things. And actually, with the recent stories, we went out in the last week and purchased two carbon monoxide detectors, and we're putting them in two of the squads at a time. It's been about twenty-five dollars, we're gonna run it about five days in a row in each squad, and just to make sure we not, we don't have any problems with the current cars. There's some speculation that some of these squad outfitters, as they drill holes to add lighting and sirens and equipment, that perhaps that's maybe where some of these cars have had some, some, some input, but they're not sure. But we thought it was just better, and actually, Alderman Woods passed on some information, too, so we appreciate that. So, we just decided to go out and proactively test the cars, and if, obviously, if something came up from that, we already gave our officers instructions to park the car, we'll tow it in and check it further from there, so.
Great, thanks.
Any more questions? Okay, motion, second, let's have a roll call.
Alderman Rory Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes, thank you. Chief, would you take us into the Dujus Intergovernmental Agreement, please?
Sure. This has been, the intergovernmental agreement's been on the agenda for quite a few months. This is for the DuPage Justice Information System. It's a complete from nine-one-one call to dispatch to in-card mapping, and dispatching, report writing, you know, booking system, and then court management system through the county. So, this is, we did quite a long presentation on this last year when we signed the letter of intent, saying that we intend to go forward with it. And now, there's a whole governance committee that was led by the state's attorney's office, and this has also been reviewed by the DuPage Mayor's Managers Conference to address any of the concerns that there were, and they've come upon this, this, this agreed IGA that would put the final pieces in place for the project, that is really coming along very nicely. We've had people as a part of the working groups that are actually developing the product. We've also been a part of the governance committee, and, you know, pretty heavily involved in this project. It's slated to be rolled out by June of next year, and it's on schedule as of now. We'll actually be starting the testing phase for it in September and October, train the trainer right after the first of the year, and really a robust system that I'm looking forward to be able to demonstrate in the future. So, what we're looking for approval tonight is to go ahead and, and sign the, the intergovernmental agreement. We talked last year about the maximum cost that we projected over seven years would be no more than about three-hundred-and-four thousand dollars, and we were hopeful that it was gonna come in under that. Now, it looks like our costs are gonna be about twenty-two percent less than that. So, over the next seven years, it would be a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. That would also include a five-year contribution to an equipment replacement fund of about three million dollars. So, when this equipment, or when the servers are reaching some datedness, you know, actually, seven years into this project, there'll be enough money to completely replace that and keep this going for a longer period of time, so. The IGA, like I said, it really, we have to accept as-is or not, because this is gonna be a county-wide IGA. It's, it's my understanding that a number of agencies, they asked us to try and get these in place by September 1st, and, and we just got it at the end of July, but many agencies are passing it. So, we don't see anyone that's of the initial user count, which kind of set the budget for it. We don't see any agencies that are not gonna be proceeding with this so far.
Alderman Messina?
Just to confirm for, for everybody up here, even at home, the idea of, of this program was to have one kind of version of the truth, all systems tied together, eliminate data silos, so what I see and I task as an officer, I'll see in Glen Ellen, and I'll see in Wooddale, to improve communication, and then officer safety. Is that a good summary of what the idea of this?
It, it really is, and, and even going forward in analytics, you know, all the agencies are gonna be tied together, even just on this, this net viewer system that it has, that at any point throughout the station or on a computer, you know, you can see the map of active incidents, map of where all our cars are. You know, and it goes all the way through the state's attorney and probation to that they can track cases. So, it's really kind of like an ERP for the police world, and hopefully, it'll be a model for, you know, other counties in the state that are looking to go for it, so. It really is, and just for the people at home that, that might wonder, why are we going out and buying a system? Well, the current system that's been in place for well over a dozen years, and we've been on it for eleven years, is no longer being supported by Motorola. So, it's, it's either this, or we go back to pretty much paper and pencil, you know, paper and pen, so.
It ain't happening.
Don't make that motion to.
The paper and pen?
It's a paper and pen.
Alderman Wesley, we have a question on the floor?
I have one question. Greg, it looks like someone's town done taken part of it. Naperville, Downers Grove. Does that mean they have an option to come back into this program? Or is this, this is a line cut out for those other towns? So, if these other towns come and play, does our cost go down there?
The, right now, the costs are based on the current users. Once these IGAs are signed, if anyone else wants to come in, their pricing is gone for them. Naperville, I don't anticipate coming on. They were a possibility from the beginning, but at the beginning, also Lombard was not going to come on, and they've now decided to come on. Downers Grove, I believe they are going to be coming on. Maybe I'm mistaken on that one. Yeah, there are a couple that have chosen not to. Bartlett has chosen not to at this point, because Bartlett has reporting in three different counties. So, they've decided that this wouldn't be effective for them, 'cause, you know, really, the nice thing is, this is gonna have a case management system that, for even the DuPage State's attorney, we can plop things into that, and they can pull it down, and, you know, so Bartlett's decided that it wasn't the right fit for them.
It's just I just don't want Mrs. Chase to walk along down.
This is gonna be about our cost. If, if you had one agency come on, it might go down a little bit, but they're not guaranteed any pricing, as long as they didn't get in when everyone else did, so.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I, I think his comment was going a different direction, but I'll just adjust it for everybody, but, yeah. So, those folks that are staying by themselves, those cities, I mean, they're, they're gonna be responsible for hardware costs, right? So, physical servers where the data's gotta be stored, they gotta pay for all that themselves. We're splitting it with all those other cities, so this is, to me, a no-brainer.
I agree. I'm gonna call the questions, so we had a sec, we had a motion, a second. We're gonna do a roll call. Eileen, please.
Alderman Rory Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Chief, great job, especially the twenty-two percent under budget.
Thanks, yeah, that wasn't necessarily me, but we, we were hopeful it was gonna come under budget, and by everyone committing together, the higher estimates didn't come true, so it's, it's good.
Very good. All right, the next issue under the Public Health and Safety. Since then, the councilman who's made this recommendation, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bond if you wouldn't mind, talking about this name change, if you could, please?
Absolutely. The, the, currently, the Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary Committee is set forth in the code. You've got standing committees that are provided for in the city code, and you've got ad hoc committees that are not. Ad hoc committees can be changed, the name of those can be changed, without any, any formal council action. But because this is in the city code, in order to change the Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary Committee, you as a council have to amend the code, so that would require a code change. And in light of the, you know, some of the, the concerns that are out there, you read about them in the, in the news, to the name change that's being proposed, is one that is perhaps more in character with, with giving a home to those kind of inquiries relative to ethics inquiries and so forth. You do currently have a policy in the city that would allow for there to be, you know, an ethics examination, if necessary. There's obviously a code in, or an ethics code that's set forth in the city code, and what this would do is give a home to any issues that would come up under there. The current charge of the committee doesn't, wouldn't appear based on the name to include that as part of the charge. That would expand the, the scope of that, and it would, in order to have the name changed, it would be required under the city code to include that, that particular section in the, in the name itself.
What would the new name be?
I believe it was Public Health, Safety, Judicial and Ethics Committee.
Ethics Committee.
Judiciary Committee.
Can you repeat?
Of a Health, Safety, Judiciary and Ethics Committee.
Basically the word ethics was added to the Public Health, Safety and Judiciary Committee. Alderman Jacob.
Just a couple, I mean, I see what we're, why we're doing this. I guess my only opinion is, is that, I mean, we're not, I don't think the city council should be setting ethics that are their state laws to do. And the other thing is I just don't want this to become every meeting we have talking about different things and just going and rambling on about certain things. That would be my concern.
Alderman Messina?
Just to kind of expound, I guess, on Alderman Jacob's point, I get it, it's well-mannered. I think where he was going is policies that I think were all very clear. I think we take these classes. We should, we're elected to represent our folks. I just think that, I hate to say this, it's got a kind of a negative connotation on there. I don't think we should be governed, right? We were elected to be ethical, but this, out of my opinion, this change kind of signifies like some have not been following that. So for those watching at home, once again, I don't want to give that impression that we're needing this. This is, if we're bucking the trend, trying to get ahead of something, maybe, but I don't know, to me it's just, I feel like it gives a bad impression, not against it.
Let Mr. Bond address that concern.
Because currently you do regulate the, you have an ethics code that's set forth that you are required to comply, it's the, with the state statute. The state statute says that, and it governs your conduct as an alderman and as elected official. And if there is a, an issue, to Alderman Jacob's point, there is a criteria for that. It can't just be, I don't like fellow aldermen, I want to make some comment, or I don't like something that was said. There's a, there's a standard that sets what type of conduct is prohibited, what kind of conduct is subject to an investigation and so forth. And to Alderman Messina's point, it is getting out ahead of the curve a little bit because a lot of times it, these things are dealt with and I think the public says, well, wait a minute, are these dealt with in some closed room or, you know, this brings it out in full transparency, brings it out in the public and it gives a charge, more, most importantly, it gives a committee to be charged with that because you currently have it in your code, but where do you go? You've got an ethics advisor, you've got an ethics, you know, board that is going to be considering that, but where does that fall if you're going to have that, either, you know, state statute changes and you want to make some revisions to the, your provision in your code? Where do you do it? Under what committee do you do that? This gives that discussion a home. It's certainly not intended to be, you know, a tribunal that is going to be regulating the conduct of, you know, every alderman or elected official.
Alderman Messina?
Sir, are you saying there's good, there could potentially be an ethics committee that we'd be setting up?
No, no, no. You, there's currently an ethics, under the law, there is already one in place. This has nothing to do with that.
At the state level?
Well, at the local level, too.
Oh, I never met those people, okay.
Well, they only are convened if you need it and you haven't needed it, so they've not been convened.
Yeah.
But yeah, it is a, it's already in existence and again, this does not expand the chart, this does not designate, designate that, that's, you're not changing your code with respect to any of that. This just gives a home to, if there are any discussions, do we want to look at other things and do we want to make any amendments or revisions to our code? Where do we do it? How do we go about doing that? And this would give it a home, just like you've got an issue that comes up under finance. Well, that goes into your finance committee. If you've got an issue that comes up with respect to development, that you've got a place for that. So this just gives any discussion that's going to be had, it, again, doesn't create a tribunal for regulating aldermanic or elected official conduct.
Did you have a question? I'm the guy you talked to. Alderman Jacob?
I just want to make sure, again, I don't really have a problem with it as long as this is not something where, you know, we're bringing up stuff that just randomly, we don't like, the mayor drove too fast down the street and we're going to be talking about the mayor driving too fast type of thing. Just an example, mayor.
I was going to bring that up.
You know, I think the, to address all your concerns, because then I'm going to call the question and we're going to move forward with this. I think as Attorney Bond mentioned that, we're going to be ahead of the curve with the most important part as elected officials and staff is that for the purpose of transparency, that's the whole key to this. And this isn't to pinpoint people or, you know, as Pat said, it's a home for anything that comes up under the auspices of ethics. That's all. My motion is to change the name. I make the motion.
Second.
Any more questions? Take a roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
No, we're back.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. And anything for future meetings under this committee? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Could I give a, maybe a, oh, the hail damages to squad cars? Give us update on that? Or could we send a memo out?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, there's a report on that coming out tomorrow, but in summary, it was one claim instead of 20 claims or else we wouldn't have moved forward.
And then, all the other ones, public works.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you, chief.
Called the Public Works Committee. The committee take a reflect that all residents, all representatives are still here. Need approval minutes, Republic Works Committee regular meeting, July 13, 2017. My motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Question carries. Report and recommendation for purchase of a Peterbilt hook lift dump truck from JX, Peter, JX Enterprises Incorporated in an amount to not exceed $310,000 is my motion. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight, as you recall, on a previous council meeting, we passed an IGA with the tollway department that basically stated that Wooddale will try to reduce its salt usage in conjunction with the new I-390 going in to reduce the level of chlorides going into Salt Creek. This was offered to several communities along the new I-390. However, Wooddale and Bensonville are the only two communities that took, took the initiative to take this grant up. So this is the formal approval of the vehicle that the grant money will be partially paying for. It's a hook lift, so what that means is basically the bodies come on and off the truck. It'll have a chipper body box that'll be used during the summer and then primarily in the winter, it'll have an anti-icing unit that'll be 1,000 gallons, which will essentially triple our ability to anti-ice the streets before storms, which is crucial for taking care of those, you know, nuisance snows, the half inch to three-quarter inch that we have to come out salt for. This will go ahead and melt those off. And it's also a safety issue where it will prevent snow from bonding to the street. The other body will be a B-box salt spreader and that will be used in the industrial area to salt the streets.
Eugene Wesley?
So the state is giving us a grant for $139,500, is that?
Yes, the toll, it's correct.
So the $309,944, is that without this grant or is it a minus or how is that working?
That is the total amount, so the $139,000 will be deducted from that. So the city will be approximately paying $170,000. And then also there is an option on there from Peterbilt due to the length of how long it's going to take to get the bodies built, approximately eight months from approval, that if we choose to pay for the chassis ahead of time, they will give us a $1,600 deduction in order to avoid any price increases that are coming.
I understand it, so the total cost would be then?
On the city side or total?
On the city side.
Approximately $170,000.
$170,000.
And you did, you did say, we did budget for this last year.
Correct, yes, it is in the budget. Correct, and then they will reimburse us.
I just want to make sure, can I?
Peter?
Just for future, if we could maybe put that, and I was a little confused on that too, where this $139,500 came in. I mean, if it was said, you know, I wasn't sure if that was with it, so in the future, when we put these packets together, will you have a little more clarification on that?
Absolutely.
What else?
Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Roll call.
Not to exceed what? Someone make a motion not to exceed?
Motion and a second.
Not to exceed, man.
Not to exceed.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Next, they have approval of a contract with Williams Architects for the park, our public works feasibility study in the amount not to exceed $18,500 is my motion.
Second.
Thank you. Yes, this is basically a study to determine what type of space needs we will need for the new public works building in planning for the future. RFP was sent out on May 17th to several companies, only one was returned and we just so happened to get a Williams Architects who are extremely familiar with building public works buildings. They've done Oakbrook Terrace, they've done Willowbrook and they've done several others. So they're very knowledgeable in this field. The RFP committee felt that their proposal seemed right on target of what we need. Basically they'll talk with staff and determine what we need as far as assets for the potentially new building, combining the streets department with the current water department into one building. Matt and I kind of gave an overview of what we think as far as space needs, but we really need to drill down on that and this firm has quite a lot of experience in this.
Questions?
How long will it take?
My first question.
Right, Brad.
How long will it take and then secondly, I guess, secondly, what's the end goal of this?
Let me start with your second question first.
Okay.
So basically the end goal is to kind of drill down and give us what we will need as far as space. So typically with these studies, you already have a site in mind, so they're able to say, well, we need to fit X amount of space on this site, where right now we're trying to figure out how much, you know, how much space we need in that building and then find a site from there. So they'll be able to say, you need X amount of storage for your vehicles, you need X amount of space for your vehicle maintenance, you'll need X amount of space for locker rooms. They'll be able to determine, you know, how much space we need for, you know, ADA stuff, if, how, why the hallways need to be and how much storage space we need. As far as the study length, give me one minute, please.
I got 14 weeks.
Believe it'll be a little over three months to do everything. Once they do the interviews with staff, they're going to compile all that information and then they'll meet with us, go over the review and then have a final review for us to submit them to council.
Peter Jacob?
The one question I have is, this is strictly for the public works, because I just, looking at all their material, I saw that they had, where they put public works and police departments together and things like that, this is.
No, this is just strictly for the public.
Looking for public works. Okay, thank you.
Will that, when they do the study, are they also going to look for soft dome storage?
That will be one of the considerations, yes, and storage for, obviously, for all of our materials. So yes, we'll include that in the overall needs.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
For the sake of transparency, I need to recuse myself because I have done business with this fine establishment in the past, Williams Architects, so I am recusing from this vote. That's called ethics.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Next, they had approval for a contract with Thomas Engineering Group for the engineering design and development standards manual in the amount not to exceed $32,000 is my motion.
Second.
Done.
Yes, so basically as part of our goal to try to codify everything together along with community development, we want to develop standards that are written down, so this way when we're working with multiple engineering firms, they have a set of standards to go by. Matt and I have noticed over the years, different standards have been used according to different engineering firms, different public works directors, different engineers. So we want to kind of catch up with where most of the other public works departments are and have these written down. We also noticed a lot of our standards need to incorporate some of the modern ADA assessments that aren't in a lot of the older standards, so there's just something a little more easy for us when we're doing designing projects and as well for residents. So for instance, if they're replacing sidewalk or they're doing their apron, they'll have a document to say, hey, this is what I need to do and then there's not questions, you know, waiting for community development to get back to them because they have to ask to us and we're hoping to speed up the process on the resident end as well.
Peter Jacob?
I guess my question on this one is, you know, I thought for all streets stuff, I mean, we have, everything has to meet I-dot standards. I really am a little confused why you're saying that different engineering companies design things differently. And second of all, you mentioned like a resident putting a sidewalk in. I mean, we have codes in place, shouldn't all that be already dictated? Why would there be a difference right now?
Right. Well, a lot of, it does have to meet I-dot standards, however, for, if we're doing smaller projects, for instance, if we're doing roadway replacement, if we're doing a patching program in-house, it's nice to have those standards down. So, you know, how much pitch we have to put in the road or what type of curb we're putting in. It's easier for projects to have that standard built out as opposed to having the contractor then have to go through thousands of pages of I-dot standards. It kind of puts it all in one place for them to look and review it and say, yes, I can do this project and give them a better idea of cost as opposed to having to go through all the I-dot standards and try to figure out kind of the legalese of it.
Good fellow.
Yeah, I guess my only comment on that is, I mean, I would hope that when we hire an engineering company that they would already know those standards, that they wouldn't have to go through I-dot. That's what they're doing for other towns, so I still a little lost on this one.
Correct, but it's, it depends on the engineering firm as far as variations, so type of curb, for example, one may specify a roll curb, another may specify a box curb. If we don't have that down, saying this is what streets we want to use that on, they kind of can take a liberty with that and we want to be able to say, this is what we want to use for this type of project. So it'll make it a lot clearer for everyone involved.
If I could just add, a major component of this is that there will be drawings, which when a resident comes in and they're, and even despite the fact that the specifications are in our code, they don't know what that looks like. And so we tell them, we need a drawing that shows how you meet the code. These are actually drawings where we can say, this is what we need you to show us on your drawing and that way it makes it much easier for them to come in and get a permit. So a large component of this is taking what we already have in our code and just making diagrams so that it's easier and everybody understands what they need to do.
Legal.
Yeah, it seems like you should be able to just look and say, here's the I-dot standard, but it's I-dot standard 216.3 point subparag, you know, so you need to, in order to get to that, you need an engineering degree, a law degree and a great deal of patience to try and find it. And it's very difficult, there's certainly not, a member of the public couldn't, and even a, even a developer who's, who's not doing massive projects would not, they're not going to be familiar with it. And the engineering, I mean, the I-dot, the highway standards are like that thick, so you're not, just like, I don't know every statute. I can look it up, but I don't know every statute. This way it's going to be in one place for you to be able to access it. And I know, because I've reviewed, we've had some projects, when we've held money back And I know, because I've reviewed, we've had some projects when we've held money back, and some of the aldermen at this dais have indicated whether or not we're going to hold their feet to the fire and look for any type of liquidated damages. And in order to do that, we have to determine whether or not they've built it in accordance with the standards. And so it is, it is a challenging way of doing it, and as Ms. Christie indicated, having the diagram is going to make it a lot easier for everybody. And what it does is it brings uniformity, which is really the key. You want to have them done to a quality standard, but there's also, you want that to be uniform throughout the city.
Yeah, just to, since I've been pushing for this since I got in office, because there aren't any written standards, and we have, you go through all the roads, every one of them's different from when they were built. So from a building perspective also, if I came in and was going to do a little three-house subdivision, there's no code for what that road is. So when we look at all these old Sunset, Homestead, all those little cul-de-sac things, those are all built with like substandard width, that's because there was no rule. So I dot doesn't necessarily, while they're pretty extensive, they don't necessarily cover every road in every instance. And that would also cover sidewalk widths, distance, what kind of, what bag mix we want poured, as Ken pointed out, the curb, the shape, whether it's a B six twelve, you know, the crown in the street, what kind of crown, what kind of pitch. There's a lot of stuff to, again, get that consistency throughout the city as opposed to looking at I dot standard, what does our code book say? What exists? What's grandfathered in? What did another engineer, what's their opinion? And we know, kind of like the attorneys, if we have three engineers, we'll get three opinions. I didn't say they wouldn't all be the same, right? So, if, I mean, if that helps, so it's kind of to clean all that stuff up.
How did you, how did you narrow it down to this engineering firm?
The RFP committee selected them based on their overall proposal. They liked, basically, their holistic approach to developing these engineering standards. Really was a detailed RFP, it just wasn't kind of vanilla, like some happen to be sometimes. They seemed to take real interest in getting a lot of our input, and they really seemed committed to doing a thorough, hardy engineering standards manual for us, which is what we need.
Okay, one more follow-up. How long is this project going to take?
This will take several months as well for them to have to go through.
Several months, three months, two months? Can we put a date on it?
No, there is no date on it as of yet.
So the contract's signed with them, we don't have a date on when it has to be completed by? But I'm just saying.
Right, a lot of it's going to be meeting with staff and going through, so it's, it's several months. We don't want to necessarily put a deadline date on it. We want to be able to meet with them as well as community development to go over these standards to make sure we're getting the best product we can be for our residents and then for contractors that are coming in.
I totally understand that, but my whole concern is, and we have sat up here several times, that projects have gone over longer, 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 and we need to start nailing these dates down, when these projects are coming forward. His project, his project went over almost a year. I mean, we wore these contracts, we want to be completing these contracts at a timely fashion, not two years down the line. That's all I'm saying, is we, we delay projects left and right here, and I want to keep the council moving on projects and delay projects that need to put a date on it or something. Thank you.
Another comment, I mean, this sounds like, from what I understand, I mean, it sounds like a great idea and I'm all for it. I guess my only concern is, I mean, we've been revising our codes for years. Is this guy going to come back and say, well, this is going to cost us a hundred thousand because this is going to take us a lot more time than we anticipated? It just seems like an awful lot of work, you know, to do, have drawings and for that type of price.
I don't think we need to worry about them coming back to us within six months and saying, this needs to be redone, but at the same point in time, we need to have some starting point to be able to have these documents and then revise them in the future as needed. Right now, obviously, we don't have any documents to revise, so we're kind of in the dark as far as that goes, so we need to have, you know, a base. And then if revisions do need to be done at some point, we can revise, but I don't think it's going to be where we have to revise the whole manual. Some standard may change at some point where we, we need to do a page or two, but not to where we're going to have to redo the whole document. To answer your question, Alderman Wesley about the date, November thirtieth is the deadline.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Next, they have approval of a contract with Misfits Construction Company for decorative street sign post installation, and with an amount not to exceed eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions?
Is this just foot installation?
This is installation, yes, of five hundred and ten poles plus all the street signs associated with that in the brackets.
What fund is this coming out of again?
I believe this was a CIP item. It was a budgeted item. The original budget estimate for this was a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Yeah, so the street signs, all the names, have they been spell checked?
They have been spell checked, yes.
Oh, because, because there is an error on there, Erman, so it's with an E, not an A.
Yes, no, it is, it is E.
I don't want to get embarrassed living on my street then, and I see the wrong spelling.
Yes, no, the correct one is printed. We double-checked all the signs that have arrived in a few months.
Thank you, just want to make sure.
Does that, costs include running electrical?
There is no electric for these signs, so basically, these will be for the stop signs, yields, and street names.
Mayor?
Something came up at the comprehensive plan meeting. One of the residents said, what are we doing with all the old signs? Could we buy them? Do we even think about that?
We will be collecting them and storing them. When I was in my previous community, that's what the village ended up deciding to do. They collected all the signs, sold them, and then gave that money to charity.
Mayor, I am concerned about that because what if five people on that block wanted to...
Just like we did with the banners?
My question again, when is this contract?
It will be eight weeks from the date of approval that we give them, so we're hoping that they're going to start, if it passes committee and council, we're hoping for a start date the week of the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, and when will it be completed?
Eight weeks from that.
Eight weeks?
Start date.
Roy, you have something?
Yeah. It's on this tape. I just don't, we brought up about the signs now, about what we're going to do. We're not going to, you're going to come back to the council and make a decision what we're going to do with those signs.
Correct, that'll be brought to council for you to decide what you guys, how you would like to dispose of the signs.
Okay. And one more thing here. You know, we look at the eighty-one thousand dollars here, and we still haven't talked about the state taking our two percent yet. So we're going to keep spending money here until we start talking about the two percent that the state administration fee that we're going to be losing on that too? So, just a statement.
Just to be clear, so these folks are doing the main pole, the bracket, but our public works folks have to come in afterwards and actually slide in, or is it everything?
No, they're going to do everything, including removal of the old signs. They'll bring all that back to the public works facility, and they'll put in the new ones.
So this is completely outsourced, nothing that we have to do?
Correct.
Okay, and those five hundred and ten pole and brackets covers the entire city? I mean, and there were some areas that were like split between, oh, we're on the border of Itasca and Wooddale, or Bensonville and Wooddale, or unincorporated. Who made these decisions, I guess?
It will be based on our street signs that are currently listed, so every section of town that we currently have a stop sign at or we have street name signs at, that's where the poles are going.
Alderman Roy Wesley? Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Next, they have approval for change order number three with K five construction and the amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Water services where homes are out of well water. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Eugene Wesley?
First of all, I think it's a little steep for, that's only my opinion. The other thing is, why is this, is it because, someone explain why are we doing this? A change order on the street that hasn't started.
So initially with phase one and phase two of this project, there was water main included, so these services were done. On this portion of the project, there was no water main done, and it was brought to staff attention, that there were several homes on that block that were still on wells, and that while we were having all this construction being done and the residents being disturbed, it would be a great time to put those stubs in for them. And encourage them to take advantage of the community development grant to be able to hook up the city water.
All right, so the street that we just completed, refresh my memory, which one was that? Ed Brick, so all those people had the connections too? They all got in that block?
Yes, because there was water main done on phase two, yes.
So don't, I have no problem proving this, but I think we should make an ordinance out of this then, or make it, whenever we do a street then, we should make sure every street's got the connection to it. Even if the water main ain't being done, because now we're doing an add-on of twenty-eight thousand three fifty, but now we're going to do here, so next block we do, if they have wells, some might have wells and not connected, we're going to come back again and do a change order? I'd like to make this a policy then, if that's the case.
I don't know how many more there are, but yeah.
Just to fill you in, so we've been pushing to get everybody hooked on, onto city water, so that's number one. Number two was the, the other roads have been combined with water mains, so it naturally got fit in to the project because we were doing the water mains. Once we made a change in how we graded or when we replaced that water main, this last project didn't get a water main, right? Because we're going to extend the, because of the life extension on the water main. So it was kind of an oversight by the contractors and by everybody bidding it and putting it together because there's no water main involved, and nobody's thinking that those people on that block have wells, so it kind of popped up. And it, and it probably will pop up again in a couple more years.
But, but that's, that's what I'm trying to say here. If, why can't we do that? We'll know what houses, I'm sure we're going to do more streets with no water mains. Why can we not make that in our specs or whatever, that if they're there, to do it? I mean, instead of coming back and forth with change orders, because I'll tell you one thing, if this change order doesn't happen, vote goes down, it ain't going to happen. But why, if we put a policy in play or a procedure in play for streets that we do redo without the water main, it's a no-brainer. To me, put it in there.
Mayor?
I'm sure that'll be one of the standards in the new book that we have coming out, as well as offshoot streets, these partial streets that we've had a couple add-ons before. Certain type of, the water meters or whatever the, we use American Standard or something, and I believe Royal Oaks, we had, the engineer had bid something else out, and the public works director at that time goes, wait a minute. We use these, this is what we have in spare parts, so there was a change order right off the bat on that one. We're talking about compaction, you know, the street, twenty-five percent of Royal Oaks was patched already. So there'll be some standards coming in the book, strategic planning, we'll be discussing all this stuff.
Motion, second. Anything else? Peter? Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That is to be considered at future meetings. They have stormwater cost share to be announced. Anything else?
I just want to thank Ken and your staff for going over to Itasca during the storm. Trustee Latoya Kimiakon told me to thank you for coming over to help them with the storm. Even though we had our own problems, we're helping other communities, which is good.
Thank you, Alderman.
Eugene?
I would like to have a discussion on that generator from the police station, and why it failed. Again, we don't have to talk about tonight.
It's in the report going out tomorrow.
Is that, is that in the report that I asked for? Did I haven't received it?
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
It comes out tomorrow.
Anything else? Chairman? Second.
Call the Finance and Administration Committee to order. Roll call, please. Oh, let the record show, excuse me, let the record show that all the same aldermen are still present. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting, Finance and Administration Committee meeting on July thirteenth.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Reports and recommendation. Vehicle stickers, delinquent mailer. Brett?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure you all recall that last year, you authorized staff to get the Secretary of State data and do a subsequent delinquent mailer based upon that data, which occurred in late December and ran largely through January and February. At that time, we were evaluating how effective and fruitful that program was going to be. It turned out to be very fruitful, let's go with that. And so this year, in looking at the numbers, we were hopeful that those residents that were encouraged to come get a sticker last year based upon that delinquent mailer would all come back in in May and June to do so again, and unfortunately, they did not. So in looking at the numbers of what we were able to generate and the stickers sold based upon that delinquent mailer last winter, staff was looking into the costs, cost benefit of doing another one this year solely based on the scrub data that's still in the system. So it wouldn't be a Secretary of State mailer again, it would just be what's in the data mailing out the reminders, but the data was already scrubbed nine months ago on the Secretary of State data. So staff is just looking for a direction if the council would like to move forward with that. The not-to-exceed price from the vendor is twenty-seven ninety-five plus postage, which will all be determined on the number of pieces that gets sent out. So depending on how the direction of this goes, if it's the will of the council, we could just build that into our workflows every year and into the budget every year to do that, to catch those people. If not, we could certainly pass on it, look at other options, but just since we had done it last year and it generated a good number of people coming in that otherwise wouldn't have, thought we'd look for a direction again this year.
Alderman Woods?
I renew my motion to eliminate city stickers.
Is there a second? Sorry? Then all in favor? Question?
Brad, how much, how much do we generate, the additional? Once we sent out the, the delinquent stickers from in December?
Sure, it was, it was north of thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars, so we're asking for what, twenty-seven ninety-five?
Plus postage, right. Probably be thirty-five-ish.
Right, and my other question is, don't we have a program right now, delinquent program, how about the residents that are buying their vehicle stickers and happen to forget? I mean, don't we have a policy that we sent out, the delinquent mailers?
Brett?
We do not. If they happen to find it on their kitchen table or something to that effect, then they come in, they move into town, they come in and talk to us. But historically, up until last year, we had not sent out a delinquent mailer or a reminder mailer. That just wasn't part of the workflows that was ever established. And like I said, based upon the results of the one from last year, wanted to bring it to you to see what the will of the council was again this year.
Just to be clear before we move on to Alderman Sizmarski's point, last year's postage and cost was not twenty-seven ninety-five. It was a little higher, wasn't it?
It was, because they had to incorporate the Secretary of State data, and there were significantly larger number...
Profit, but what we're entitled to?
Sure. The good news is there's less delinquents than last year. To your second point, presumably we'd get a similar response to that mailer, that would be cash flow positive to the city.
Thanks. Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes. Brad and Chief. There's a lightening of load a little bit, not checking for vehicle stickers in parking lots and everything else. Is that done by CSOs or occasionally by a slow-working police officer? Not slow-working, but slow day is what I should have said.
I know what you meant.
That's slow walking, that's slow eating, that's slow walking.
Right. So one of the things we do in the public parking lots too is we also drive through looking for a lot of handicap violations. So it's something that kind of is done during the patrols when they're not assigned to certain calls. So they're expected to, you know, the CSOs, when they're not assigned to a non-criminal-type complaint, part of their time is spent patrolling the areas, looking for those types of violations. But it could be handicap, fire lane, city sticker violations. So it's not like we assign someone to man hours to say, you have to do this so many hours a day, so if that's what you're asking.
But I guess it would be like one less thing for an officer to have to look at, he can just concentrate on other things.
Sure.
Alderman, forgot your name, Sorrentino?
There's no vehicle sticker. There's written a citation.
That's correct. There written a citation. What we do is when the sticker due date comes due, we usually give people a month grace period. After that, you know, we do issue a citation. If they come in within the first two weeks of getting a citation and purchase their vehicle sticker for the first, I believe, three months, we will reduce it to $20 because they came into compliance with the sticker, but there still has to be a fine for some type of processing that we did. But after that, it's a full $50 citation.
Follow-up question?
Yes, so what if a person hasn't had a vehicle sticker on them in three years and now he's going to come in and you're going to give him this grace period?
Chief?
No, for, we run into this typically at the end of the, at the end of the sticker year too, is when the vehicle stickers are done being sold for the current year, we'll issue a citation and if they haven't been getting one for, you know, since a year or two years ago, there is no break on that. And then we also do make sure that once that transition period between when they stop selling stickers for the previous year and then a couple weeks later roll out the other one, we keep track of any vehicle sticker tickets we write, so we're not just going to hit someone every day because they won't have an opportunity to purchase one since we just stopped selling the old ones.
One more follow-up question?
Yes, all I would do is encourage the council to, if you see something, you say something. Don't be afraid to call the CSO and come out and if you've got a block full of people without vehicle stickers, you can either have seniors as well. Thank you.
Can I add a question to it, Chief? If someone has a sticker, but doesn't put it in their window, but they, it's on record of having it, how does that work?
So we have a procedure for any of our parking tickets that we might write, because there's usually not an interaction like there would be on a traffic citation, we have a parking ticket protest form that can be filled out. People will fill those out from everything, from seniors that forget to put their handicap placard up, but they come in with the placards, people that don't put their vehicle sticker up, but they have it. Now, some people choose to not put it on their window, so if we have more than one ticket issued for not having it in the window in a year for the same car, we're probably not going to void that second citation out. But if it's a legit, they forgot to put it up, just like, you know, the placard, we do have a procedure that we can void those tickets out.
Thank you. Alderman, Peter Jacob?
This is for Mr. Wilson. As far as, as far as on these, you know what, that question was answered, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're done.
Chief answered it.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a motion. Alderman Woods made a motion to eliminate the, to eliminate the stickers and we had a second. I'll take two more questions. Hang on. You had a question, you had your turn.
Yeah, but you cut me off. I wasn't finished.
Okay. Could you give me one? Go to these guys first. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Greg, are you telling me the computers aren't, you don't know in the computers who bought vehicle stickers or not?
Chief?
We can have access in the records division as to those stickers, but that's not something that shows up in our computer that's on the, on the lead system. That doesn't show up in that system.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying, is saying they could do a protest form or whatever, that's just another timed, come during business hours and spend more time with city hall, which is nonsense and I say, let's get rid of them.
So before we continue on with more questions, Alderman Woods's motion is something that can be considered a future item. So if we can note that, it's not something we can vote on today. Am I correct?
Yeah, and to the extent you're voting and all you're doing is giving staff direction to have that matter come back with whatever additional information you need.
So we'll, once we answer the two remaining questions, we'll take a vote for Alderman Woods is your proposal or your motion, that's the word, and see if we should bring it up through future item. Did you have a follow-up, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yeah. What we're talking about tonight then, maybe we should just have one, just wait for...
Okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Greg, according to our standard that we cannot write, we cannot go on private property to write a citation with a missing vehicle sticker, am I right? Property.
Well, there's certain areas of property that are private property and certain areas, you know, that you would need some type of warrant to go on or something, but publicly accessible locations, we don't make it a practice to go into every drive and check these out because...
So is a driveway considered private property?
Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, I mean, it depends if it's on the apron and it's visible from the, from the public way, that's clearly within the purview. Otherwise, if it's in, you know, garage or up against the house, the police cannot go on to private property to determine whether or not a vehicle has a vehicle sticker and it's a valid sticker.
So you shouldn't back into your driveway, is what you're saying, if you have no sticker?
So then the answer that is rising today, is this the state list we're going by again that we're asking to do? Refresh my memory.
Go ahead, Brad.
No, this would not be the state data. Since we just acquired the state data less than a year ago and ran that through to produce the December mailers, we would just, you know, reuse that data that's already been scrubbed now to send out these delinquent mailers.
Did someone...
You have another question?
Double-check that?
You have another question?
Yes.
Okay, you may proceed. Go ahead, it's your question.
Did someone double-check that list again to make sure we got it all cleaned up?
Go ahead, Brad.
Yes.
All right, last question, Alderman Tony Catalano?
I got two questions, is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you. How much do we collect in this program? Total? Estimate?
Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, I think the overall revenue is around $130,000 for the program. I think last year was, it was higher due to the delinquent mailers, but...
So to clarify, $130,000 plus incremental $30,000 from the delinquent mailer or $130 total?
It was $130 and then the delinquent mailer was on top of that last year.
Another 30 on top of that.
So total?
$160.
So that, and that helps to fix the streets, the potholes?
Go ahead, Brad.
Goes into the general fund?
Go ahead, Brad.
It goes into the general fund. Yeah, the code does elicit a few uses for it and to the greatest extent possible, that's what it's used for, but it goes into the general fund.
So, so right now, it's a non-system that we have, so, so we should set up a policy in sending out mailers, late mailers. And my question is, if we eliminate it, we're going to have a lot of, we can eliminate it for the businesses too, and if we do, we're going to have a lot of people come in town and use Wooddale's address, because they don't have to get a vehicle sticker to get cheap insurance for, for instance, if they live in the city of Chicago, they're going to, they have friends that live in Wooddale, they're going to use their address and get cheaper insurance for the city. So for $15 that we're charging them, I mean, that's, and our seniors don't pay, I don't think it's a bad deal. So I'll make a motion to...
Seniors do pay.
For the $27.95 to send out the mailer.
Right, so first, let's...
Nobody made a motion.
Time, we, we have an existing motion on the floor to give direction, so let's take a vote on that first, and that's Alderman Woods's motion to eliminate stickers. So why don't we take a roll call on that first? Is that correct legal?
Yeah, you could do voice vote.
Yays or nays?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of eliminating vehicle stickers? Yays? Oh, to give direction for staff to look into eliminating the vehicle sticker program? We do a roll call? Okay.
Sounds like it might be close.
Okay, Eileen, roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
No.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
So it looks like that motion fails?
Yep.
Did I math correctly? Go ahead.
So then I would recommend you go back to the item on the agenda, which is to give direction to proceed with the delinquent mailer or not proceed.
Okay. So Alderman Catalano, would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, I made that motion to proceed and set up a policy on the...
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions?
Before we second, could we, well, it's already been second, but before we vote on this, couldn't we do this, change the code so this is automatically done, so this doesn't have to come in front of us every year? Because this says for one year, but I thought you said make it permanent.
So before we go to Brad, he would have to amend his motion to include building this into the budget. Alderman Jacob, is that what you're asking? So it's automatically in the budget?
Put it in the, in the city code so that we don't have to come in front of the city council every year to do this, to automatically do this delinquent sticker.
Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, so it's not, that's not something that's in the code, that's not codified, but if the motioner would agree to that, and yes, so we approach it.
Motion to include this as an annual budget item?
Yes, we should have a policy on sending out mailers, delinquent mailers, yes.
Any other questions? We have a motion, we have a second. Can we do a...
Yeah, and just so it's clear, you're not amending the code, you're simply indicating this is going to be a continuous program and wouldn't come back to you each for...
Right. And in this motion, simply to give staff direction to move forward with this mailer. Eileen, can you do a roll call, please?
What's the price tag on it?
Sure. Could you repeat that motion, please, Eileen, for roll call?
I just want the price.
Oh, the price?
The price.
$27.95, $2,795 plus postage. Does anybody have any other questions before we go to roll call? All right, Eileen, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. A revision to code 7.305B of the city code. Brad, is that you? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this fee schedule was updated last in October 2014. Earlier this year, middle of the year, we got word from our meter supplier that pricing had changed in an effort to make sure that our schedule was up to date with the current pricing. We wanted to come back and amend the code and update pricing. The other thing that we wanted to do was the previous, or the current version of the code states that a 10% administrative fee shall be applied to the above referenced schedule. We wanted to amend that to say that a 10% fee has been applied to the above referenced schedule. So we're just building the 10% fee, administrative fee into the price of the schedule. A couple reasons for that. One is if you're going online looking to build something or purchase a meter and you see the schedule, you go, oh, hey, a one-inch is $300, and you get to city hall and now it's magically 330, that could lead to some animosity, you know, at the window trying to explain what happened. Or, you know, the human error portion of it is that, you know, the 10% doesn't get added and then you run into that issue as well. So just looking to bake that in to eliminate a little bit of the human portion of it and add some transparency to what the actual cost is going to be when you come in to purchase that meter.
So to be clear, before we go to Mayor, Police's question, you were looking for direction on us building into, building into the price of the scheduled water meters, 10%, 10% increase? Did I understand that correctly? Brad?
Well, it's just the 10% fee that we would have charged anyways, we're just baking that into the schedule.
So you're looking to amend?
Yeah, so we're looking to actually amend the code with the revised schedule, which includes that language change. So it's, we updated the pricing, but then also incorporated that language change along with the pricing change.
Mayor, please.
Brad, I thought we had a long discussion about this and some of those meters, we were losing money, whatever, and we said our cost plus 10% going forward. Now, did we miss something before?
I remember the conversation.
We sat here for an hour talking about this nonsense.
Brad?
To cover our costs, right?
I remember that.
Okay.
So what are we doing different now? I thought it was our cost plus 10%. Is there something different? It still says 10, plus 10%.
Yeah. The, the table that's in the code currently does not have the 10% built in, so it would have to be added in administratively when somebody comes in to purchase it.
After.
After they, so the revised code, the revised table has the 10% built in, so it's the same 10%, we're just presenting it up front to everybody instead of surprising people on the back end. Yeah.
Alderman Mayor, do you have a follow-up question? Alderman Mayor, would I come? Alderman Police? Alderman Mayor?
No, I'm good.
Why are you talking? He wasn't listening.
Tired.
Talk to yourself.
Any other questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I agree with the mayor. We had this discussion. Why, why is it coming, that's, that's why my concern is that we need to put time limits on to get this stuff passed. We had this conversation.
Brad, any...
I defer to the attorney, this is...
Yeah, I mean, all you're doing, yeah, you've already done, you've already taken the action he's asking, he's just asking to clarify it in the code so that if somebody comes in there, they know, they don't have to do their, do their math, it already has it, so you're going to put it in the schedule, that additional 10%. All you're doing is, because it's in the code, you just want to make sure that the code's schedule is consistent with the code language, which is consistent with what you as a council authorized previously.
Right?
No, it's already been done. It was done. You're just clearing, well, because you're clarifying that in the code because it's been confusion after that.
Go ahead, Mayor.
So looking at the schedule, one inch, $300. What if next year it's 305 or price goes up? I mean, you're going to change the code every...
Yes.
Just so somebody's going to stand top of it.
Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, that, that was the actual impetus for coming forward tonight was to update Yeah, that, that was the actual impetus for coming forward tonight was to update the pricing. And then reviewing it, and it just made more sense to also, to build it in. So, the initial thrust of this was to update the pricing because prices changed. We got the new price listing. But then, like I said, just for in the spirit of transparency and not catching anybody off guard with that administrative fee that they might have missed, looking at the code real quick, we just, we just baked it in.
So, in the spirit of transparency and ethics, you're saying we're going to build this into the code wording? Brad?
That's what I presented, so however it gets spun, it's...
Alderman, Alderman Jacob?
Just a quick question, Brad. I see the three-quarter inch is 192, and then it goes down to 187. Is it actually going down? I mean, all the other numbers go up. Is there a typo there, or is that correct?
Yeah, surprisingly, that one did go down. We've asked around, but there's not a lot of hard evidence as to why. Part of the logic behind it is, is that the city of Chicago is buying the same type of meters, and they're buying a lot of them, so they're baking them in significantly higher volumes. So, there could be some volume pricing on the smaller ones. But that is not a typo. That is actually what the pricing came out. I think the, the new gen heads were a little bit cheaper as well, so that probably contributed to it as well, so...
We need a motion to give direction. Anybody? We do not have a motion yet. We need a motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That passes. Revisions to Section 2.206. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, in the spirit of, you know, part of the treaty plan was to go through and look at sections of the code that were in need of revisions, and going through them, also consulting with the attorney. This section, chapter 2.206 was found to be one that would need some attention, and I will defer momentarily, if not totally, to the attorney on this particular item.
Attorney Bond?
Yeah, I'll just go through these, and you'll have those in ordinance form. But some of these things, and we've talked about this for a number of years, there's nothing that puts you afoul of the law. It's just, and you've been doing it in accordance with the law, it's just your code and your practice have been, have been different than that. So, the one of them is the, the language relative to the two readings. There hadn't been a requirement to two readings. Two readings of ordinances was back in the day when you didn't have publicly televised meetings. People couldn't get there very easily, so that way if somebody in town heard about it, they said, "Well, I gotta make sure I get over there at the next meeting," and meetings weren't regularly scheduled. There wasn't a requirement for 48-hour notice, posting of agendas and so forth. This was a way of making sure that the public was aware of the action that their elected officials were taking. That is antiquated. It's not, not required. You used to have to publish in the, in the paper and all that. So, this just takes that and makes it sort of modernized. I'll go through it. If anybody has any questions, I'd certainly be glad to address those. But if you want, I'll just go through the items. You don't have a choice. I hate to break it to you, but most of these is just cleanup. You got, you got to fix it.
I'd say someone can make a motion. I don't know if you need to read them.
My motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thanks, Alderman. Thank you. Items to be considered at future meetings. Water rate discussion, September. Vehicle sticker, sticker, October. Any other items to be considered? Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the staff, on this vehicle sticker, it's because of the two years. I remember Alderman Sorrentino brought up about safety and concerns for the seniors. We came out with the two blue ones, two years in a row. If the chief is feeling that that's working, and the staff feels it's working, if we could just ask the council offline if they still want to have this. If they do, then we'll bring it up. But if everybody's comfortable, do we really need to have another 20-minute discussion on vehicle stickers? About, well, the discussion was going to be about making them all two years, right? If everybody's happy with the way it works, because there was a safety concern, right? So...
Brad, do you have any questions on that? Or Chief, any comments? So, you're looking for motion to strike that as a future item?
No, they could have asked the council offline, providing the chief and everybody felt comfortable it worked right. If it didn't work right, then it's a different story. But if it's working fine, then can we just ask the council offline to manage, whoever the chief? If they want it on the agenda, great, put it on the agenda. If not...
Jeff, is that something you could answer?
In all honesty, every time we talk vehicle stickers, there seems to be some debate. So, I would be uncomfortable unless tonight we vote on it being a future item or not.
Are we able to do a roll call on who would want it actually taken off as a future item? Could we do that? Attorney Bond?
You can. It gives direction.
Yeah. Why don't we, if we could, Eileen, could you do a... Okay, before we, we take a roll call, go ahead, Alderman Woods?
Yeah, well, we discussed this before. We brought up all the things of two-year sticker. Obviously, it's double the price. There'd be issues with people that not wanting, or saying that that's too much. People moving out of town after one year. Do I get refunds? These are all, we're going to go through that endless... gyrations. That's why I made the motion to take it rid of them before. We have to talk about them every two months. You know, it, it's crazy.
Alderman Catalano?
A lot, a lot of towns are going with two years. Saves cost and for staff. The reason why I also brought it up is go for a two-year vehicle sticker and lower the cost for all the residents, so...
But then we, so how does that work with the delinquents then? Do we still pull that every year, or would go to a two-year mailer? Jeff?
Well, why don't you put on the agenda?
See, everybody likes to talk about it.
Okay, so, let's do a quick vote.
I renew my motion.
Can we do a roll call to strike vehicle sticker conversation for October? Could you do that roll call?
You can't just...
He wants to strike it. Can we, he wants to remove it.
Remove it as a future...
Go ahead, Mayor.
I said, if it was working because of the concerns, they could ask the council. Chief feels it's okay, it's working. Brad says it's working. Now, if you guys feel they want to go to two years or this and that, and what, you guys want to have these conversations? I'm going to be, I'm going to be in the favor of getting rid of it because I don't want to talk about vehicle stickers ever again.
Okay. Why don't you take a roll call to strike this as a future item?
Alderman, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
You want to...
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Sizarski?
No.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I'm lost.
Do you want to strike this as a future item? You're voting to vote on it. Do you want to vote, do you want to vote on it later?
I vote to let them talk about it.
Okay, so it's a no.
No, I'm, I'm okay with them talking about it.
Right, right. So, no, you don't want to strike.
I don't think that we can strike it. That's my personal opinion. Because if two Aldermen want it on, it should be on.
It can come back. It's just, right now, it's a scheduled future item.
So, then we're going to run down, so it's the same conversation again.
All right, it passed.
Which is my whole point. I renew my motion to eliminate this.
All right, so we've passed, that's passed. Any other future items to be considered?
I have...
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
Brad, have they started taking out the 2% of our sales tax yet? Administration fee?
Go ahead, sorry.
Sure. The receipts that we're still receiving now are lagging months before the new budget was passed, so we have not seen that come through yet, no.
We know that's coming up, so when are we going to talk about it?
Want to put it on as a future, future item?
Sure. Because it's going to affect, we don't know how much it's going to be because you didn't figure it out yet.
So, Brad, do you have a figure, or is that something we need time as far as scheduling this? Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, based upon the current budget level.
This is another subject that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, not the agenda. I mean, it's about $50,000. I mean, just, you know, projects in the CIP come in under budget, over budget, all the time. So, it's, it's natural ebb and flow, but we, we do know what that number is. It's been identified and could be accounted for in next year's budget for sure.
Is there another Alderman that wants to put this on as a future item? There needs to be two.
Sorry, forget it then.
Correct? I'm sorry.
If you want, we can put it on if he wants to talk about it.
Go ahead, Attorney Bond.
That's if you have a new item you want to bring onto the...
From a new item, okay.
It just comes out of nowhere, not out of a committee discussion or council discussion.
Sorry.
In other words, if somebody, you, you happen to have a conversation, and somebody says, "We want to put this on outside of the, a public meeting," then that's how we get there. Two Aldermen will make a request of the committee chair for that to be placed on a future agenda.
So, this was meant to be a future agenda item in the first place? At some point, is that what you're saying? Because it's new.
Certainly.
Outside of it, okay. Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, we were planning on talking about this during the budget process.
Okay. Okay. So, do we need to take a roll call? Attorney Bond? Okay. Any other future items? All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting's dismissed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Jeff?